President.
Let the board know, Clark, Fowles and Tettens.
Thank you. We have the first item on the agenda as the minutes of the June 11th Board meeting. It's in your packet. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion we approve the June 11th minutes.
Second. I have a motion by trustee Hollenbach, second by trustee Clark to approve the minutes of the June 11th meeting. Is there, are there any additions or corrections or any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of accepting the minutes of the June 11th meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Next item, we do not have the minutes yet. It was a holiday week and we will have those ready at the next Board meeting. So, we can skip that item and the next item is communications.
We received a thank you note from the American Cancer Society for supporting their Relay for Life with a donation of a thousand dollars. It was on 5/20. We also received a thank you note from the Riverside Art Center thanking us for, they're very grateful that they received the eight thousand three hundred dollars from us and they put out some future events that are coming. I don't care if anybody would like to see this. And that concludes the communications.
Thank you. Those did require any action. So, visitors' remarks. Would our assessor like to tell us what's new?
We've got a lot going on at the assessor's office. So, we are currently open with the Cook County Board of Review through July 30th. We are having a seminar tomorrow night with Commissioner Dan Patlick. Also sponsoring the seminar is Sean Morrison, our Commissioner, and State Representative Lisa Hernandez. So, they'll both be here tomorrow night. We should get a pretty good turnout because I think they both distributed information. We've been distributing information. Jen's been doing a great job putting it on the website and Facebook and other social media. So, people in town have been talking about it. So, I'm hoping for a good turnout. It is the last year of the triennial. So, but we always, you know, people are always interested in appealing. So, that's what's going on. Yeah, tax bills are out. So, we are getting a lot of corrections this year for some unknown reason. I don't know why. But we do have a number of tax bills that have had mistakes on them. So, a little bit more than usual. Usually we get a couple because there's some, when they're, when the senior freezes is, calculation is involved, it's very tricky. And that's usually the case. And it is the case this year too. So, we've been busy with that. So, if anyone calls.
Yeah, we've been referring calls. If they do call us or want to.
The village has been getting the calls too. So, so we're busy with that and Cook County's very busy too because usually we're, there are certificates of air and usually I'll go to the Bridgeview office and they give me the corrected tax bill or a certificate of air right there. But they wouldn't even take them from me last week when I went downtown. So, they cut me off. So, now I have to, to send everything in and wait a little bit longer. But, but we should have all corrections done by the August 1st due date. Oh, and I did speak with Rob Rose and I'll type up a report. I just haven't had a chance to. Rob Rose was a person from the Cook County Land Bank who was involved in the project in Riverside Lawn. And he just wanted to update me that the project is now being completed. All of the capital that was earmarked for that particular project has been spent. The end date was June 30th and the Cook County Land Bank purchased 23 properties and there was one in the process of still being demolished when I spoke with him last. So, once everything is demolished and all the, the property transfers have cleared, then they will transfer everything at one time to the Cook County Forest Reserve. So.
How many properties were over there?
Um, there were about forty-five properties, forty-five parcels. So, some properties had two buildings on them, some had one building, some had none. Most had one building. But there were a couple of unusual situations that had two buildings and, and a couple, they also purchased a couple of vacant lots, so.
So, half the people took.
Yes.
Took the county up on them.
Yes.
And there's still people over there?
Yes, there is. Predominantly along 39th Street.
But those people weren't eligible, were they?
Yeah, they were.
Everybody.
Everyone was.
Okay.
Yes, yes. At first they weren't going to put 39th Street in, but then they decided just to make it eligible for anyone who wanted to take advantage of it.
Okay. Because there's some people that just had built a couple houses over there.
Yes.
And those were put in?
Those were left. The people who built it decided to stay.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And if, if there's just, there was one home that was vacated many years ago and that's one that they're demolishing now. And it had two buildings on the parcel. And so, I think they had a hard time getting it from the bank. There are a couple of vacant properties that they really had a hard time with. So, I think that's why it dragged out for so long. So, so that's all I have to report.
Any questions?
And I will type this up for you Vera. I just haven't had a chance to.
Oh, thank you. All right.
Thank you Fran. Thanks for everything you do. You do a great job.
Thanks. Very good. So, the next item would be the supervisor's report. And I'll just bring you up to date on a couple of things. We finally got the repair work from the raccoon invasion completed yesterday. They, they were way behind because of the weather. And so, there's, there's bright shiny copper on that in a couple of spots there, but that will soon gain its patina like everything else. There, there's a little bit of additional information regarding the cornerstone in that I did connect with Sandra Kaplan that Bill had, Bill had talked about. And he, he told me that he had gotten the permission, because I had said, I understand, I had sent you, I think, the information that it's heavier than expected. And he recommended that we use an architectural engineer to, to see what is going to be necessary. So, I contacted him, you know, let me know what the cost is and so forth. And he called me back that the, that his boss, that Sanders' boss had gotten kind of a pro bono approval for them to help us out to investigate what's needed. So, so that gentleman should be coming out probably this week or next week the latest to see what we're dealing with there and whether it's really going to be feasible to open it twice even because the, the concern is apparently that that section of the building is actually a tower which presents different engineering things. So, we shall see. I did speak since our last meeting, very briefly, with the village manager to see what we're going to have to go through to see about getting permission if we do fireworks and to have the event in the park and so forth. So, just very preliminarily, they're going to be having a staff meeting within the next week that she'll touch base with the chiefs about what, what their expectations, what, what their feelings because she feels that the Board will go along with what the chiefs recommend. So, we talked a little bit about, well, where would fireworks happen and so forth. So, we'll see what, what goes on. I also spoke briefly with the North Riverside Recreation Department about when does their, if they know at this point in time when next year's fall festival would be. And they have no idea yet because they're dependent always. They try to work around homecoming and not to interfere with homecoming. They wanted a different. So, her feeling was that probably their event is going to be more likely the, around the latter, in the twenties of that month, that like the following weekend that we're looking at. So, we shall see. That's, that's the news I've got on that. The Springfield trip is sold out. It's been sold out since last week.
Oh, great.
So, yes.
I've gotten several requests to get another bus.
That's if you, if you want, we could split up Marjorie and myself and we could each deal with, you know, one bus. I don't know that we'd fill another one. We might want to get a smaller one. But, I mean, that's certainly a possibility if this Board wants to stand up to that, that expense. We did have, we were kind of surprised. There is a, a family that has been with us the last two years and they had not come in. And I understand they came in this morning when I was busy with somebody and they had to be told no. So, and that last time, I think they brought about a dozen people. I mean, they had all the extended family.
Is there, is there a waiting list, so to speak?
We do have a waiting list, but it's not a very long waiting list. I mean, some people might drop off. So, yes, we're taking names in case somebody drops off. But, yeah, it, the, the media assistance really helped. We got out the word earlier than usual too. And with having had the shredding event and such, that kind of promoted more too. So, people are, we're on people's radar a little bit. The shredding company, speaking of that, that we used for our event and we, we had talked about another date, and they have very limited availability for the rest of the year from that company. August 10th, which is the day of our Springfield trip, and November 1st, which is the day before our cornerstone event. So, and then they might have some midweeks or Sundays, but I don't know that either of those is a very good choice. So, I did reach out again to North Riverside and because some people who came to our event said, oh, North Riverside has done this several times and they did it this way and that way. So, I checked. They had two companies they could recommend. I haven't had a chance to reach out to those yet, but I will check with them. What I would like to know from this Board is when do you want me to look for it? I mean.
September 14th.
September 14th. Boy, you're very specific.
I was going to say sometime next year.
No, I really would like to, you know, we had a lot of disappointed people.
Yeah, Saturday in September or.
Okay. That might be a possibility.
Even the week after, you know.
So, September, like sooner rather than later? Okay.
Well, I think after Labor Day.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Yeah.
After the, I mean, the afternoon event was very successful.
Do you, would you want to keep it in the afternoon then or do you want to try morning?
Might as try morning if we could get a.
Because that was our original desire.
My question is when does the next newsletter come out?
Well, we can work around that. It depends on what all we have to announce. So, normally we would have a newsletter beginning of September, right after we, you know, when we have pictures from the state fair and things like that.
So, this should be, the shredding should be after the newsletter hits the mailboxes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Early October is also beautiful weather.
Yeah, it is. It really is.
What about?
We got to worry about homecoming now.
What about September 28th? That'd be another.
Okay.
That's the day after. Well, I have Autumn Fest as September 27th this year. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Autumn Fest is September 27th in North Riverside this year.
So, the morning after that, would that?
And I think that is because it does not conflict with, I think that the third week in September may be homecoming. It's either then or it's in October. But that's why Autumn Fest is then because I believe it is the third event that is RB's homecoming. So, we could try for that, that Saturday of, after, after the Autumn Fest. All right. We'll try second half of September or early October.
Did you also get that phone number that I sent you in the picture for that other shredding company number and I sent it to you too late last time?
I'll check. I don't remember. I honestly don't remember. I thought that North Riverside probably used their refuse collector, but they do not. These are two completely different names that, that she sent me. Shred Pro and Accurate Document Destruction are the two that they've used and they recommended both. Okay. And finally, let me see my notes.
I was going to say before we have the supervisor's report.
Yeah, I still have a couple letters too.
Oh, I'd like to revisit. If our waiting list gets long enough, would we be up for getting a short bus kind of thing? Should we approve if waiting list equals X, then we do Y?
We could. I, it's up to this Board.
Okay.
I don't know.
Finish up your report and then we can.
Okay, yeah. So, then I think that in your boxes you got today's report from our meeting with Vieri Girardi. So, that's, basically the good news is our, we're starting to get hits on the site and, you know, we're starting to make a difference. And it's usually some news event that does bring them to us. So, the shredding event, there was a big spike around that time. And so, that's, that's a good thing. And then you'll remember some months ago, we approved the, the LED lighting for the bridge and that should be starting within the next foreseeable future because, I mean, it goes through comment and there's a grant program and all of that. But the wheels have started and I was told that once those wheels go into motion, it has to happen within 30 days. So, we should be fixing the, or replacing that lighting shortly. The other item, I was just about to, what else was it? Oh, the, you have the information about the farmer's market in your packet. So, we'll deal with that later. But in terms of the Springfield trip, that's still part of my report. What is your pleasure? Do you, do you want to set some kind of a goal and should we keep, should we reopen for those who?
Well, the bus capacity is how much?
Well, we, we went with 50 people because we reserve a couple of seats for coolers of water and such that we take with.
So.
Is it, is it like a coach bus?
It's a coach bus with a bathroom.
With a bathroom. So, would the smaller bus have a bathroom?
I don't know. We haven't, we haven't looked into it. They, there are some somewhat smaller ones that are maybe a 40 capacity, I think, that still have restrooms. We can look into it and, I mean, I, I really don't know how much of a waiting list. I did tell Marjorie to keep a waiting list and I don't know if that family of a dozen that came in today, I'm sure she has their contact information from prior years because they've gone before. We could, you know, we could fill a few seats right away with that.
Why don't we just get another bus?
Okay.
Only if it's worth it.
Well, I mean, the way I look at it is you've got a waiting list. If you make, with maybe 12 people on it already, trustee Luffer says he's got some, several people that want to get involved in it. If we, if we get 30 people more, that's the most we've ever had going. It shows that, you know, this is something that the residents of our township really want to do. So, I say.
And we've always had inquiries from outside the township. So, if we really needed to fill it, then we could do that too.
I make a motion that we get another bus for the state fair trip.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by trustee Hollenbach, second by trustee Luffer to get another bus for the trip, for the Springfield state fair trip.
We have plenty in our budget to take that. And I think that this way we don't have people that are disappointed because they, they procrastinate or whatever.
Right.
We're putting it together.
If we want to build it.
That's exactly right.
You can't be turning people away.
Right. All right. Then this would be an expenditure. So, would the clerk please call a roll on this? Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Luffer?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Any of you are available that day? We may need more people to supervise the trip. All righty. Then on to trustees' reports. Trustee Clark, do you have anything for us?
Just that our senior lunch will be tomorrow. And that's really the only thing I have to report. I think our senior outing, which will be in the fall, will be a trip to the Morton Harbor Dunes.
Nice.
How are the exercise classes going?
They're going fairly well. The numbers are a little bit down.
They've been, well, yeah, they've been down now around the holiday and with parking issues because of the construction.
But we're still getting about 11, right?
Yeah, we're still getting, yeah, in the, anywhere nine to 12 range.
Nine to 12 range, yeah. So, that's all I have to report.
I think the lowest we had was Friday after, after the four of us, and that was still like nine people.
Yeah, that's great.
Mm-hmm.
I would expect it to be worse.
People love it, so. Trustee Drapka?
Yeah, can I get a, can I, I have a question about the bikes. I didn't hear a bike update part of the, what happened with all that?
They came that Tuesday after, spent most of the day taking them out of here, just as you guys spent most of the day putting them in here. I, what did I say that the, I forgot to jot that down. I think I sent you an email. I think the count was 86.
Eighty-six, so.
They were very pleased. They were very grateful. By the way, he also said, yeah, that one bike was really cool, but it doesn't bring as much money as you think it does. But, no, they were very grateful. They came with a enclosed panel truck plus a pickup that had bikes piled that I don't know how he was getting under biaducts. I mean, it was.
Oh, I know the way that they put them.
They pile those things. He got, you know, we were getting what, 10 into a, a truck and it must've had 30 in that, in the truck. It was just, he had them like vertically and everything. So, yes, that was very, very successful.
So, if we do another shred-a-bun, are we going to do, collect the bikes too only if working bikes can come that day or?
I think we should find a new charity personally. I think we should mix it up a bit, you know, if we get a good turnout. But I, I really think that we should mix it up.
What type of charity?
Oh, see, now I knew you were going to ask that.
How about our food pantry?
Well, that's, that's one thing that I was thinking of is maybe we can get some of the kids from Hauser for their food pantry and everybody bring in, you know, a couple of canned goods because Hauser's food pantry supports ours. I, I think that would be a pretty good idea if we can maybe team with Hauser and, you know, these, these kids need service hours and so on and so forth. And that would be a perfect opportunity for them to get that, so.
Fine, fine, okay.
If anybody else has anything else, but I, I do think that we should switch it up.
Does that, everybody feel that way?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, very good. We'll look into that. And was there anything else, trustee Drapka?
No.
Thank you. Trustee Luffer, do you have anything?
No, I don't have that, not this time.
Okay, well, you, you were instrumental in helping us get the.
I think that's more you at this point.
Right, well, yes.
Vera's been incredibly diligent and hardworking, making sure that the farmer's market is going to accept the vouchers that we're putting in the food pantry. Kudos, hats off, all the good work Vera.
I wasn't looking for that, but thank you.
Yeah.
It really wasn't rocket science. It was just trying to.
Doggedness.
Trying to communicate, so, yes, you, you will see in the packets that we have the sample voucher as well as the, the little instructions that went to the individuals. That was where we started getting a little hung up, well, you know, how do the vendors know what they can buy with it? How do, how do the people know that they can't get change? Because we didn't want to clutter the voucher itself, so we just gave them a sheet of instructions. And so far, we just started handing them out last week and tomorrow will be the first time that they are redeemed or available for redemption because the vendors had to be contacted. And it, yeah, it's, I think it should go well. The people who have received the voucher so far were very excited to, to get them, so.
Yeah, there's, the other thing was, I'm with the Presbyterian Church and their fresh produce program. They're strictly volunteer and they're just getting up and running, so they're kind of working through it. But it's a really good opportunity for us to partner with them because they, they are covering across people in need and we're the organization that has services for those people in need. So, I look forward to partnering with them moving forward. One of the ideas is a ride share to help them pick up the produce from Tony's or wherever they get it.
Aldi's.
Aldi. So, kind of helping them with some of the logistics of it all, but it's also more just cross pollination of school or the pool?
Pool upstairs.
Pool?
Yes, the auditorium.
But I think it's a great opportunity. There's, they know a lot of people in need. We have the services. They're more on our system where they just go in and grab it, so.
And that too. So, what we've done with them, I, we did have a very brief face-to-face with the lady who runs it over there. She stopped in one day to introduce herself. And we're going to meet again to figure out how we can kind of refer to each other. And in the meantime, I have also told, when we were not yet involved with the farmer's market, I've been telling some of our food recipients of that, of their availability as well.
Who'd you meet with, Tom?
Tara.
Tara Greggs.
Right.
Is that who you met with, Vera?
Yeah.
She's.
She does Cory's kids, so she's very active at times.
Also, the Presbyterian Church is doing beds for a week in August. And if we wanted to do a service project, I thought maybe we could serve dinner. I think they're looking for people to serve dinner and people to serve breakfast.
Are they also looking for people to cook the, the food or just?
Um, I think.
Get it somewhere?
Yeah, I think it's cooking and serving, so.
Right, that's what my other groups do.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah.
So, if we wanted to do a service project, I think that might be an ideal project for us since we support, correct? Just for one night.
Yeah. Lastly, I did reconnect with the community garden folks. They are up and running. They're at Ascension Lutheran. So, they have land and they have water. So, they actually are planting. So, now that they have that structure, they're looking to come back and see, partner with them. I think it'd be more of a grant. But then again, if they're working with it, we could provide the fresh produce for the Presbyterian folks and we could really start making some connections. I think it'd be nice.
We've been, they've been having some educational events too, which is very nice, like Garden 101, things like that. Very good.
Are, Tom, are they selling the products somewhere or is it all just to give away?
It's, it's mostly for the people who they bring at home. So, I'll have a plot and I'll grow my vegetables and bring it to my house. Their original proposal was to give us some, a percentage of it, but we're not able to handle produce. So, you know, that Presbyterian Church would be a great partner in that.
Yeah. Very good, thank you.
One last.
Sure.
And Peter or Riverside Foods, I was trying to get in touch with the farmer's market people and he said he would love to participate in a voucher program once the farmer's markets or even during the farmer's market. He takes SNAP and EBT, so, and he's one point source of purchase, so it'd be much easier for us to control that way. So, he'd be an additional partner on that.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, sir, sir.
Thank you for, for that outreach. Appreciate it. Trustee Hollenbach?
Hi, good evening. The Mental Health Board had their meeting last month. We approved the teen texting program and that will be up and running in August. Also, we got a grant from the Riverside Junior Women's Club for a thousand dollars to help the system.
Also, we got a grant from the Riverside Junior Women's Club for a thousand dollars to help assist in the payment of that. So I thank them for that. We will also see, as this program goes on, our cost for the Mental Health Board will come down, because there'll be plenty of, in case history has had, had with this program. People start coming on board, wanting to be sponsors of it. We'll still be the main sponsor, but our, our costs are projected to go down as this starts up. We also approved continued funding for first responders, and so they can continue to be educated on how to deal with mental health issues. We are also looking at increasing a, the WSSRA. We currently do fifty percent of the class plus fifty percent transportation. We are looking to up that in the next coming year, so, and it could go up to seventy-five percent, and we will take care of it for the families. That program seems to be running very good. Our, our Resource Center, Community Resource Center is up and operational. We will have postcards ready to go within the next week or so. They have had some activity. Supervisor Wilt has had, been able to send some GA people over there to help, you know, to see if they, we can help them with that. So it seems to be a pretty good start for that program. We don't have another meeting until September, so, but I will keep you posted on the Team for Text, and I'm looking forward to that program going on. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Would the teen texting program be something that we could partnership with at the shredathon? Or not?
As far as one?
I don't know, like, because I don't know...
Well, the high school is going to run the, the part of it, we're just funding it.
Okay.
So, we've got the high school people and NADI are involved in that, and they're coming up with a whole program, which we should see the results of that by the end of August, beginning of September. So I'll keep you informed.
Okay.
And is that, is it projected that you will front that program down to the Hauser?
Well, that's up to the Hauser, and of course, we, we've approached them, they were approached about it, and like I believe I've said before at past meetings, you know, they want to see how it works at the high school. Absolutely, we will fund that, the Hauser, to the borough of High School, we will absolutely fund that, absolutely, without a question.
And then the first responders training program, have they started that?
They have completed one round, forty-five officers from Riverside, North Riverside, Brookfield took classes, but it's continuing education. And they were thrilled that we picked up the tag, because it doesn't come out of their budgets. So we will continue that program, because it's, it's very important, so.
Thank you, very good. Okay, so, our next order of business. Unfinished business, and that would be some planning for our township anniversaries. We've met last week regarding these activities, and we did have these potential consultants with us, and they did submit a revised proposal. So this would be the time to discuss which way we want to go, what we want to do.
Well, I'm, I'm okay with, I'm okay with bringing them on, but just not with the overall proposal, because I've been taking a look at it, there are still mistakes here and there. So my, my question is, I mean, let's say, for example, the date, she's still got like September nineteenth on here as her celebration, whereas we had said September twentieth. So I just don't want to...
No, I think the nineteenth is it, isn't it?
No, the twentieth is the ceremony. I, 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 I'm okay with bringing them on, I just have a concern about signing the contract and then, you know, locking in all, all this stuff.
Wait a minute, it is the nineteenth.
Are you looking at next year's calendar?
I am, two thousand twenty.
I am. I thought it was the twentieth. We have all this stuff written down as a...
No, 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 and she originally had the eighteenth.
Oh. Well, even so, I mean, some of this stuff, like, the stuff that they have on page five and, and four and six, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to sign the contract and lock into having to do all of this. Because I don't know if some of this we should be doing, and maybe there are some other things that we should add. Does that make sense?
It does make sense, and I agree with you that I don't think we're ready to sign a contract, because I don't think this contract is what we're looking for. And there are also opportunities for us to promote things that they are not aware of, just like at the holiday stroll, and on Fourth of July when we give out things. We could save the date.
Oh, yeah.
There's also, you know, we wanted to do some service projects, which I don't think they really may or may not have a hand in organizing them, but certainly promoting them. And I just don't think we're there yet, plus I don't think we have researched the cost enough, you know, because we have to look at, I think, insurance. And I was talking to somebody on the Fourth of July, and they said, you know, the village charges them, somebody from Friends of the Fort, charges them for the fencing that goes around the park, for the labor to put it up, for the extra police. And as I said, liability insurance, it'd be very, very important to us to have liability insurance.
Well, yeah, and, and going on that, I would, I would assume that some of that is covered in here. For example, here it says, production consulting, logistics, tents, vendors, applications, permits, et cetera. I think that little line item...
They may get it, but, I mean, they may, you know, get the bids and get the contracts and all that kind of stuff, but we still are paying for it.
Right, right.
The other thing is, I think that before we do too much planning for the building anniversary, we really need to see what's in there.
I agree, yeah.
You know, secretly, and, and now see...
So, I see the line item here, it says, consulting rates, five meetings at a hundred and fifty an hour. All right, that's on page six. I think in order to, I would say, in order, they, they've obviously spent time here at our Committee of the Whole meetings, so that would be one meeting plus the other that they...
Well, I think that that was a pre-b, we had the contract, that was just to get acquainted.
I would, I would, I would, so I would be okay with signing them on in some fashion, so that they can come back to our Committee of the Whole meetings, and we could work through this contract here, and, and get a handle and hash it all out. But I would, I would try to say, hey, yeah, we're serious, but we're not, we're not gonna sign this document. Does that make sense?
It does, I don't think anybody's comfortable with signing on for all of this quite yet, so, I mean, I may need to...
Fifty thousand dollars for marketing.
Right, well, and we need to understand, however, if some of this is actual management of events rather than just marketing...
Right.
Then we need to understand, so what does this include? Yes, we see bullet points of what it includes, but, but does that mean that you, you know, that this is going to include, that you expect that, that rental of tents is already in here? Or is that additional cost and that kind of thing?
I see, I think that it's gonna be, well, that's one thing we need to find out, but I have a feeling that's all additional cost.
Well, and that's, yeah, that's what we don't have a real good feel for yet.
That last page does have event management on it.
It does, but, but it's like exactly what, what does that mean?
Is it festival management? Is that what your time came by? Where it says festival management?
Then, the one thing I do like on here is the key message development, and doing a half-day workshop with us.
I still don't know it like that.
I do think sixty-five hundred dollars is kind of on the high side, but I do think that we need some type of workshop-type thing to develop our messaging, our messaging strategy. And then, once we do that, we need to stick to it.
Yes, I mean, I just, I just went through a whole marketing, three-year-long process, and I'm just seeing prices here that seem very high. You know, a two-day seminar is usually about six to fourteen thousand. So I'm, I'm, I mean, if these are the prices, you know, I, I think these are all good things to do, and I support doing them all. But at these, these rates, I think we're priced out of the market, and I just think that's fifty thousand dollars for...
And I do think that that key message development, however, I know it says the half-day workshop, but I think that's just one element, that's one bullet point of it, you know, and list the people involved, and then you've got the outcomes. You get the message map, you get the external, you know, you do get work product beyond, they're not only working a half-day with us, it's, but I think we do need that fleshed out a little bit better.
Right.
To understand exactly what are we getting for that kind of money. Okay?
Yeah, and, and the positive media relations here on page four, you know, line item number two. Ongoing news release writing, media alerts, research and FAQ development, historical fact sheet infographics. I'm sorry, but I believe that we have office staff that could probably do news releases and historical fact sheet.
Well, but I think we're dealing with a PR firm and a, you know, communication firm, because they are experts at it. Yes, do we do it on a daily basis? Yes, do we do it as well as we could?
But I'll be perfectly honest with you, the press release only goes so far, the paper's gotta pick it up.
I know.
So, why would we pay that price?
I, I understand. I mean, I think that this is a holistic approach, though they're looking at, this isn't a few press releases, this is an ongoing media blitz, you know, kind of thing.
But you know, and I think that they're used to doing their media blitzes to attract a larger audience and a larger crowd, whereas we want to mainly focus on Riverside Township.
Sure.
On it, so I think we want to work with them.
I fully agree that this is a bit much for us, and that when, I don't, I don't even have a real good feel for it, but, you know, I got this right before the holiday, and it's, you know, I've been catching up this week, so.
We don't do anything until we get a budget.
Right.
Period. We still don't know what we're going to spend.
Right.
And we're gonna break it up into two different things, and I know that's on our agenda here, but that should be the number one thing that we think about.
Right.
And then we can plan around that.
I agree with you, because when I was kind of going through these numbers and all that, you know, I was up to, you know, between a hundred and fifty and two hundred thousand, you know...
That's, that's unreasonable.
Oh, which I agree, which is, one thing is that I think we might have to cut back our expectations a little bit, you know? It's a saying, I think we all have champagne taste on a fear budget.
So do you know what Riverside spends on their Fourth of July?
Um, well, it's the Friends of the Fort, you know, that do most of the cost, and they, you know, they fundraise for that. They are a 501(c)(3) organization, so I was trying to look up to see what their expenses were, and I wasn't able to successfully do that.
The village does give them a big sum, though.
Well, the village carries some of the cost, yeah.
You know, I can also reach out to North Riverside, which puts on some events and see, you know, just what are the costs, what are we...
And, you know, Kathy Haley or, I don't know Jessica, but I know Kathy.
Yeah, Kathy and Jessica will be helpful and solitary, so...
And I, I don't see why they wouldn't share some of that information with us.
Sure.
For it, so at least we know, you know, just, you know, porta potty rentals. You know, how many times, you know, I mean, we always pay for that for the car shows.
Right, right.
But at least we have numbers on paper, which is always a good start.
And then just, should we move ahead with the hundred and twenty-fifth building thing? I did contact North Side Brass Band, because they were a tuba player, and they were fifteen hundred dollars for two hours. So, and then, you know, if you look at that reception, that's probably, if we do the band and food and stuff, I think we're looking close to between, around two thousand dollars, between two thousand and twenty-three hundred. And that's without cocktails. If we do cocktails, we have to pay for, you know, insurance liability, and then figure out, you know, a way to sell them or something.
And we don't know if we're gonna need, how we're gonna get that cornerstone out.
Right.
That could run into some big money.
Yes, that could run into some big money, and...
So, we should really find out if it's gonna cost us X amount of dollars for the cornerstone, because that's...
Right, so that's kind of step one, and that's what, hopefully I'll have some more information.
Right, and at the next, at the next meeting, we can go over budget for this first part of it. We don't worry about the second part of it, and then we can incorporate these, these people from Ripson into that, to see if they may not want to do any. You know, they may say, you know, what's number one?
Right.
But I think we could use some help on this, I really do.
Oh, I totally think so.
So, let's, let's get the estimate from the, from the cornerstone, let's get, then we can come up with a budget, and then we can move forward.
I, I would be in favor of doing this Committee of the Whole meeting, the next one, starting at maybe at six.
We could do that, I could bring in some food, sure.
Knock out some budget stuff, and then once we get the budget, like, let's, like, seriously sit down and work on where we're at and what, what we can feasibly do.
So that's August sixth, right?
August sixth at six?
Six.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
I might be a little late.
That's okay.
Well, I can take notes for you till you get...
I'll come, uh, right after work, but it depends on the traffic.
Sure.
Because I mean, I think it's important that we have that solidified, especially if we're gonna be putting out this newsletter to go in that first week of September to highlight the shredding thing. We need to be able to highlight the November second with all the details too.
I agree with you.
And then if we do the shredding in September or early October, when they bring the shredding, we can hand them...
Save the date, yeah.
Either save the date or...
Or apply by that time, a flyer about it.
Absolutely.
All right. It all works, sounds good. Okay, so then we will, we'll discuss all this further at the Committee of the Whole on August sixth at six P.M. And onward for the item B, Riverside Farmer's Market, as I already told you, you have the sample vouchers. We are giving each, each recipient three per month when they come in. The last time we did this, we gave two at five dollars, and that was, last time we did it was like four or five years ago. So, and as I said, people have been thrilled to get it. I've already had people say, oh, good, I could get honey there, they've got great honey, I don't use sugar anymore. Or I've had people say, oh, that's great, and they have fresh berries, right? Because I need antioxidants, I mean, it was like, you know, perfectly, they, they were zeroing in on what they can use it for. So I'm very excited that that's gonna work.
Can I ask a question? Whatever happened to that thing that we were talking about, about food and extra vegetables being somewhere, and you were gonna try to pick those up or something?
So, actually, that, I, that was, as Trustee Luffer mentioned before, that the, the church has the fresh, fresh, Riverside Presbyterian, has a little free take-as, you know, free will, take-as-you-need kind of exchange. And they, I believe, are getting their things from Aldi, and I had actually been told previously that Aldi, the Aldi manager was very anxious to give away some of what he cannot sell, just because it's not as pretty anymore. to give away some of what he cannot sell just because it's not as pretty anymore. But we don't have the storage here for it, so that's why we're trying to, you know, you have to have refrigeration. And if we had a specific day that people could come for it, maybe we could do that. But as it is, our people come at random times through the month. And we have weeks when virtually no one shows up, and I can't be sitting here with produce that's spoiling.
Yeah.
So hopefully, we can partner better this way with the church and others.
I believe the church is Monday, Wednesday, Friday, it's Friday.
Right, and it's a certain time.
Ten to five, I think, or ten to four.
It may even be, yeah, I, I think that I sent somebody there, and then they came back and told me it was more limited than I said time-wise. I think it's more a matter of, if you're not there early, it'll be gone, too, you know, so...
It depends on what they have, because I drive by the, you know, several times a day because I live down the street. And sometimes I see, you know, like, tons of bananas, some there.
Banana bread day, right?
Right, banana bread day, so, or tomatoes, or some, yeah, a lot of tomatoes, that's what.
You know, I have a, I have a weird question. What is the requirement for somebody to come and get food pantry?
They have to prove that they live in the township, that's all.
That's it?
If they feel they need it, they can come get it. They, they can only get it once per month. They have to wait a month before they come again, that we track. But all they have to do is prove by some means of an ID, a utility bill, something like that, that they live in the township, and we don't ask questions then. So frankly, it's less unemployed people and more, we have a lot of seniors who come, but there are people who just can't make ends meet. Anytime I have someone who comes in for general assistance, whether or not I can help them, I make them aware of a food pantry being available. Same thing if somebody comes in for emergency assistance, you know, if you're in a bind, it's here, so...
The only idea I did have was that Rycher program that we, we give grants to...
People Care?
People Care. Maybe we could do something where we could help the Presbyterian Church out and have a portion of that grant, go to someone on their program, we could pick up the produce forum or that kind of thing.
Oh, delivery?
Rather than human, I mean, maybe help, maybe bring one of their church members over. They're having a hard time because they're, they're, they're women, they're elderly, they, they don't have the transportation available, so...
So it's a problem with people coming in to pick it up, is that it?
Going to get it and bring it back to church. So that's their...
Wait, I can connect them.
Well, they can, well, you can contact People Care.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't, I would actually recommend a separate grant for the Presbyterian Church on that. I wouldn't, and People Care would take a lot, they'd take care of a lot of the seniors.
Well, that was when I had the conversation with the lady from the church. She also, we discussed the possibility of a grant. And I said that it simply has to show that it's not just, that it's not church-related, that it's simply available to anyone who needs it.
Either way, I mean, it's a good connection, whether the grant goes here or there, or there or there.
All right. Anything else?
Thank you. I, I just never knew what the...
Yeah, no, that, we don't, we don't, if we were partnering with someone like the Greater Chicago Food Depository, then we might have to have some other standards.
Standard, okay.
But this way, by running our own this way, we don't have to require anything except, obviously, we need to help the people within the township. I already gave you the information about the state fair trip, and so we've already made a decision on that. So we are up to warrants, and do I have a volunteer to...
I have a question, though. This is not on the agenda, but it was in our packet, so may I ask a question about this?
And what is it? Oh, sure, that, we just met today, so that's why it was given to you with the packets. What can...
Says here, it says, what we learn. Need to have a way for Andrew to address blog comments. What is going on?
Okay, so we actually, for example, there, there's a blog where we, you know, there's stories that, that go out on it, and there was, people can comment there or send questions. And there was recently one that was addressed to the assessor. But it was like, how do we, how do we respond to those? So we needed to go through a learning process and figure out how to do that. We also talked a little bit about whether, if there are inappropriate comments, what we have the power to do, that we can remove vulgarities and things like that should that happen. So, for example, today, Jen did show Andy how he can access that to, to do things like that.
Okay, very good.
To respond to that.
My question on that is the, the waiting on pictures, especially for the space memo?
Yeah.
Are we going to get a photographer for that?
Well, that's what we're, she offered that she's got a wide angle, if we want her to come in and take some. Andrew's a pretty good photographer, so he's taken a lot of the things that we've done before. We're going to take a look and see, I mean, I don't, as long as there's something that gives the flavor of it. Part of it is also, we'd like to sometimes do it when there's something there, so that people can kind of picture their own event there. So, yeah, we're working on, on getting some photographs for that.
Since you just get our own photos, if they're not good enough, then you can always spend...
Right, and I do have, I have a couple of semi-pro photographers up my sleeve that I could come in, including the old lady who did photos for us. I guess, I'm sorry.
I'll do the words for you.
Okay.
Here you go. Okay, I move that the board authorize and ratify the payment of the bills as identified on the general warrant on July ninth, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of twenty-one thousand, sixty-three dollars and seventy-two cents.
I second.
I have a motion by Trustee Clark, seconded by Trustee Drapka, to approve the general warrants in the amount of twenty-one thousand, sixty-three dollars and seventy-two cents. Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Luffler?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
I move that the board ratify and authorize the payment of the amounts following. Utility warrant, one thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-one cents. Payroll warrant, seventeen thousand, nine dollars and fifty-seven cents. Health warrant, one thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-eight cents. Grants in the amount of seventeen thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents. General assistance, seventeen hundred dollars. Township radio players, thirty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents.
I second.
I have a motion by Trustee Clark, seconded by Trustee Drapka, to approve the following warrants. Utility warrant, one thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-one cents. The payroll warrant, seventeen thousand, nine dollars and fifty-seven cents. The health warrant, amount of one thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-eight cents. The grants warrant in the amount of seventeen thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents. The general assistance warrant in the amount of seventeen hundred dollars. And the food pantry warrant in the amount of thirty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents. Trustee, uh, that's very quick. Would you please call the roll?
Trustee Luffler?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we adjourn this beautiful meeting today.
I second.
I have a motion by Trustee Drapka, seconded by Trustee Luffler, to adjourn this meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you.